I have 7 o'clock. We will call the regular common council meeting of the city of Stevens Point to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Jennings.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Nable.
Did anyone get calls from any of the Alders? I did get a call from Makira Zarazua, 4th District, who is ill and she will likely not be here tonight. Did anyone get a call from anyone else?
Alder Nable is ill.
Oh, that's right. I was just looking. Yep.
Okay. It looks like an email was sent out, so Alder Nable is also excused.
She sent it to Paul, though. I'm sorry.
Pardon?
My speaking out of turn. She sent it to the clerk.
Okay.
And of course, yeah.
He's not here.
Yeah, the clerk is out.
I know. He's not. That's not the clerk.
Well...
But the protocol would have been...
At least some other people know about it, so we're good.
Yes. Yes. She's not well.
Okay. And Johnson.
I'm here.
Slowinski. Niebone.
Here.
Dugan.
Here, too.
Dalton.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Ann Morrow.
Here.
Okay. We do have a quorum, so we will continue. I do want to point out that you may notice someone looking a little bit different up here today. This is Corey Lattick, who we normally see as their comptroller treasurer, but he won the "So You Think You Can Clerk" contest. Paul is on vacation this week, so the deputy clerk, Corey, is going to be sitting in, doing dual roles. So I told him he's got to switch back and forth between his normal seat and this seat. If you ask comptroller questions, you've got to answer it from over there. Now, thank you, Corey, for sitting in. With that, would you please join me in our salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just wanted to talk a little bit today about some of the things that had been going on. First of all, I believe we had another very successful riverfront rendezvous, and I would like to take this opportunity to introduce to everyone our new Parks Director, Dan Kramer. Dan, if you want to stand up, most of the city staff have met him, a lot of the movers and shakers in the city, but Dan is our new Parks Director, and he will be making the rounds as time permits and getting things squared away. But congratulations to you and your team on another very successful riverfront rendezvous. I've been hearing rumblings about the proposed land swap between the city and the county, and I want to clear a few things up. Both bodies, the city and the county, had made decisions to do certain things. However, as opportunities come up, we as electeds and good stewards of the money and things going on with the taxpayers have an obligation to explore those options. An idea came up about the possibility of the county moving its facility to the edge of town, having the city move into the annex as their new city hall, and then putting some other properties back on the tax rolls. There are pros and cons to both sides, and I want to clear a few things up right away. There was several people I talked to talked about they're hearing rumors that there were some closed-door handshake deals. That is not the case at all.
Right.
The idea came forward. We presented it to the county. We had a couple of public meetings on it. We're gathering information. Does it make sense to do this or doesn't it? And as I said, there's pros and cons to both sides. We're trying to solicit feedback. All sorts of things are affected by this. These are major decisions. In August of 2017, the council, this council, voted to build a new city hall downtown, purchased some property to do so, and started the process. Numbers right now could be between $8 and $10 million to do that. That still doesn't fix the problem that we have here with this building owning 27% of it. The county has been talking for over a decade, probably closer to two, about doing something, primarily with the courts and the jails. Okay? The courtroom security is not up to par. The jail, there's talk about overcrowding. The jail was basically obsolete before it was built, or finished built, being finished being built when it was. Having a campus style makes sense, having the support rooms for the clerk of courts, the district attorney, things that support the court and the jail, having those together is important. The county had voted to build that facility downtown, and at the time, I think it makes absolute sense. However, the cost is constantly going up. Last I heard from the county executive, we're probably closer to $100 million, or $100 million now, to build this facility here. They also acquired some property. 1039 Ellis Street was acquired for the sole purpose of building that new county facility. So the idea came up about, let's see, about this swap. Building on the edge of town is not sprawl. If that's how you define sprawl, then everything that we have in the city is sprawl because at one point, it was the edge of the city. My house, the house that I live in, the houses that you live in, at one time, were not in the city. They were developed outside that. Smart growth is okay. Sprawl is not okay. Putting the facility outside of town, or outside the main core of the city, on the edge of town, and allowing the city to move into the annex could have a combined savings dollar-wise of nearly $20 million. That's a big deal. There's also some downsides, and we're in the process of exploring those. People who use the services here at the county facility would have to go further, in some cases, depending on where they live. I can tell you that most of the people who visit the courthouse don't live downtown, so they have to get here some way anyway. But the point that I want to make and I want to stress is that this is a concept. We're talking about it. We're gathering information. The county recently chose to spend a fair amount of money to look at the design on what it would look like on the outskirts of town. It's in the county's hands right now. The city isn't having any more meetings until the county decides what they want to do. If this is something that we want to pursue, then we're going to do things like an economic impact study and looking at actual numbers of what this is going to cost and how much you are going to save. Having that facility somewhere outside of town and having us move into the annex would potentially put this building back on the market. The land that the city bought for the new city hall could potentially be back on the market, raising taxes or generating taxes. 1039 Ellis Street, same thing. So there's good things and bad things. There is no clear, easy answer for this, but what I want to point out is, again, stressing that the ball's in the county's court right now. The city doesn't have any intentions right now to have any further meetings until we hear whether or not the county wants to pursue this. Our side of it is much less complicated. The county side, there's a lot of moving pieces there. So it's not a done deal. There are no closed-door handshakes. There is nothing that is done. We are very conceptual at this point. The county is going to make a decision, hopefully soon, and Melissa can shed some light on that, being on county board and city council. But that's all I want to say, I guess, on that. We do have two people who have signed up for the non-agenda item. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council for up to three minutes on a non-agenda item? Okay. Then we will move on to item number four, which is the people who want to address the council and mayor for up to three minutes on a non-agenda item. Alder Person Niebone, we'll have you go first.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to make everyone aware that the Abor Suzuki Center's American Suzuki Institute Two Weeks Summer Camp is going to start on Sunday. There'll be free concerts every night. They have guest artists, a pianist and a cellist. The students will be playing. The faculty will be playing. It's all free. Encourage everyone to come out. If you have questions, you can call them at 715-346-3033 to find out times of concerts and things, and you can find them at Facebook at UWSP Abor Suzuki Center.
Thank you very much. Alder Person Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. A significant municipal change rarely happens quietly. Hence, the muted discussion surrounding the city-county land swap should raise red flags about the decision-making process. Silence has obscured the implications of this proposal and how it came to be in the first place. For example, is the public well-informed about the proposal? Do we know and understand the long-term fiscal, social, and environmental impacts a land swap will have on our community? The simple answer is no. And yet, Portage County Board of Supervisors approved a resolution authorizing BWBR Duberry to commence with the design development of a new county facility on 20 to 25 acres of green space near Crossroads Commons. The wheels are in motion for the permanent separation of city and county facilities and a development pattern that favors sprawl over density. But how did all this happen, and who pays? A deeper look at the land swap proposal raises critical questions about how the exchange could reshape our region for generations to come and make our city poorer in the process. Land swap proponents such as Mayor Wiesa, county executive Holman, and some rural county board supervisors claim this swap will save millions. The public has received very little information about the complexities and implications associated with the land swap. Those paying really close attention to local news late Friday afternoon on March 1st might have noticed excerpts from a press release by Mayor Wiesa regarding the property swap proposal. City council members learned about the swap in closed session during Finance Committee on March 11th. Since no action was taken, no meeting minutes are available for public view, and Alders are not allowed to discuss closed-session items. The first public forum on the land swap was held at the Portage County Annex on March 28th, where a large crowd assembled, and everyone who spoke stated their opposition to the proposal. Assurances were given that the land swap was merely conceptual and very preliminary. Then all went quiet until June 18th, when the county executive penned an article for the Gazette about the land swap and possible action by the county board of supervisors. That evening, citizens gathered inside and outside this room to listen and speak on the issue. Not surprisingly, the sentiment among many was how the proposal appeared to come out of the blue. The county board supervisors voted in favor of the resolution by a narrow 13-10 margin, a number insufficient to support borrowing even if the project moves forward. There is much scholarship on the subject of municipal buildings. For example, from the Yale Law School Legal Scholarship Repository, this paper states, "Our position is that the sine qua non of courthouse buildings should be their accessibility to the public. Those with the power to commission new court buildings ought to select sites easily reached by public transportation and proximate to other services and to use buildings housing other government facilities." A paper produced by the UW Extension in 2005 titled "The Importance of Government Facilities Downtown" states, "Public buildings are important, both socially and economically, to the downtown. Municipal buildings, courthouses, libraries, and post offices are essential components of healthy downtowns. The movement out of downtown by public facilities contributes to a decline in retail activity as people invest their energy and spending elsewhere." And then in terms of what makes a healthy downtown, there is an abundance of literature on this issue as well, but many authors and many scholars would agree, downtowns often take up as little as 1% of citywide land area, but attract 10 to 20 times that in terms of contributing to the city's assessment base and generating property tax revenues. Downtowns are unique in that they are typically the only neighborhood that belongs to and is shared by everyone in the region. Given this will likely be the largest decision this council ever makes and the need for leadership from this city council, I will be working with Alder Phillips to make sure the land swap is an agenda item for the August Finance Committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And that exhausts the people who wish to speak on a non-agenda item. I would now like to introduce Kelly Adlington from Rising Sand Organics, who is going to be giving us an update on the community composting program. Kelly? And I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Susanna.
Susanna.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Kelly Adlington.
I'm Susanna Baker. I'm the composting intern and the bucket swapper, as Melissa put it.
Bucket swapper. I like that.
Really loving working for the collection.
So she's our intern at Rising Sand Organics. I'm a member-owner of Rising Sand Organics, and I guess it was a while ago last year, around this time, but earlier last year, that we were, myself and Chelsea Huckbody, were up here speaking to you all here, and I'm realizing now how short that delay is on the slides. I apologize. It's going by really fast. But these are just some photos from the service as it's been happening over the last year. We started in June of 2018, picking up buckets from residents and businesses in the area of food waste and other compostable items, mainly food waste, and it's been going really, really well. We received a lot of support from the city in the beginning, including a donation of funds to help us purchase the special lids for all the buckets that we have, and it's just been going really well. So I'm very happy to be sharing that with you all because we've seen a lot of success with it. Our customers are really happy with the service, and we're servicing more and more restaurants as time goes on as well, and you'll see some businesses that compost with us coming up as well in the photos. So I think last year in June, we started with like under 10 customers, and they were all donors to our GoFundMe campaign because we raised a bunch of money to purchase the buckets, the bucket lids. And so we serviced these, you know, few people for a few weeks, and then signups just started rolling in super quick after that. And it kind of slowed down over the winter, but it's been picking up again this year, and I think Susanna's got the exact numbers, but I think we're at like 75, 70 to 75 residential customers and seven businesses, but I think she can give you a better update of where we're at today.
Yeah, so we started with a very small amount of buckets, and I remember dumping the buckets at White Feather, and it was just a really tiny pile, but it was with the intention of it growing definitely, and it really has. So each week, we're picking up 80 to 90 buckets now, and that equates to about 1,300 to 1,400 pounds per week that we're diverting. And I'm really excited to get to that one-ton point. I think it's really going to happen this fall. You want to talk about the schools and everything?
Oh, yes. I can't believe I almost forgot. Thank you. Yeah, we're going to be picking up from a couple elementary schools starting this September, and you all are pretty much the first people to like hear about that publicly. We haven't made any, you know, what's the word, like press release or anything yet, but we're going to be picking up from Roosevelt Elementary and PJ Jacobs. And I'm working, we are working closely with a science teacher there to see that everything kind of happens in a way that is conducive to everybody involved because our priority is to divert this valuable organic material from the landfill destination because that's not where it belongs. It can be put to a much higher, better use before that. So that is very, very exciting. And I don't know, do we take, do we do questions or...
We typically don't do questions, but what I'd like, Kelly, is if someone's interested in participating in the community compost program, what's involved, and how can they contact someone?
Sure. So if anybody is interested in being a part of our service, it's, we provide a service that costs, there's a fee associated with it. So for $11.50 a month, you can pay us to pick up a five-gallon bucket from your curbside that you fill with your kitchen waste, things like that. And then there are other options as well if you want a more frequent pickup. If you are not interested in spending money and maybe just kind of taking a more DIY approach, but not entirely composting on your own, we do have a free drop site located in town that everybody is welcome to be a part of. I ask that you get in touch with me first because we're still figuring out the logistics of that site, so it's good to get in touch. And the best way to do that is by email. That's K-E-L-L-Y@RisingSand.com. That's my email address. And you can also go to our website, which is RisingSand.com/Compost to learn more about how to sign up for the program. And that free drop site is located on Union Street, near the corner with Center Point, behind what used to be ShopCo, in between a couple of houses. Was that all of the...
I think that covers it.
Because... Yes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. It's important. I don't know if everybody understands the significance, especially those watching at home, but normally, this waste was thrown out in the garbage that the city picked up or, in the case of businesses, commercial haulers picked up and went to the landfill. First of all, it doesn't belong in the landfill. Secondly, us, the taxpayers, were paying to dispose of that in a landfill. By diverting some of these organics to composting, we're paying less for our waste at the landfill. We're doing something good for the environment, and on top of that, we're working with the composters to get rid of the city grass clippings and the leaves and things like that to use in the compost. So rather than the city having to pay for those big piles of grass to get removed when you drop off your lawn clippings, we use that with the compost. So we're saving money on both ends, plus we're doing something really good with the product. So thank you, and hopefully some other people will contact you. Kelly@RisingSand.com. There's no S there. It's Rising Sand. It's one sand.
Right.
Or RisingSand.com. So thank you both very much for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to our agenda. Item number three is the consent agenda. I do have a request to poll from the minutes of the Finance Committee meeting of July 8th. We need to poll the first two items, the payment to the Redevelopment Authority Housing Trust Fund at 281 Washington Avenue and the contract with Candlewood Property Management for managing 281 Washington Avenue. Those items will be polled for discussion. Is there anything else that someone wishes to poll for further discussion? Alder Dalton.
I'd like to poll for further discussion from the Public Protection Item Number One, the Property Maintenance Appeals.
Public Protection, Property Maintenance Appeals. Anything else? Then with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with those items polled for discussion. Motion by Jennings, second by, we'll give it to Dalton. Any discussion there? Comments from the audience? Hearing none. Can we get a roll call, please?
Sure. Morrow.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slowinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
And nine...
Nine zero. That is approved. Let's go back to the polled items, and Alder Dalton polled the Public Protection Minutes and Actions for July 8th, Property Maintenance Appeals. Alder Dalton, you have the floor.
Yeah, we had a good discussion about, and the individual was there to represent his case, and I guess at the end of the discussion, an Alder made a comment that no property owner is allowed to accumulate any sort of items on their premises and property, and so I just wanted to, for the record, state from Chapter 21, Section 3, Number 9, that no owner occupant of a premises or premises unit shall accumulate rubbish boxes, lumber, scrap metal appliances, or any other material furniture designated for interior use on the premises, which it is exposed to the weather for longer than 24 hours. So I think the point that I was making throughout that discussion was that there was at least some attempts, and whether or not the individual could remember whether or not he was moving in and out for more than 24 hours, that our ordinance does state you can accumulate things for up to 24 hours, and that is a part of the ordinances. So it's not really an emotional reaction to these individual cases, but it's really a close examination and interpretation of the code. And my second point from that discussion was that the following clause, that you cannot accumulate these things for longer than 24 hours in such a manner that may be unsightly to, incompatible with, or repugnant to the residential or commercial neighborhood. My conversations with those neighbors, again, basically asked that they don't have a problem with that sort of accumulation, and this individual who was improving his property, you know, whether or not this wasn't a complaint-driven violation. And so I guess that I continue to maintain that this individual should be allowed his appeal.
Thank you. Okay. And do we need a motion on that? Property maintenance violations are only appealable to that body, so council doesn't have authority to approve or deny that, right?
That's correct. Appeals from the decision of the Public Protection Committee under the ordinance would have to be taken with the Circuit Court.
Okay. So we don't need a motion on this at all? Okay. Then we will go to items from the Finance Committee agenda, and that is both in regards to 281 Washington Avenue. Director Estruski, can you give us an update?
So before it was put on public or Finance Committee, we weren't able to get into the property. Since then, we've been able to get into the property. At this point, we would hold on doing anything with it. The interior of the property is in pretty rough shape, so we're not going to lease it out. We're not going to spend tens of thousands of dollars on a property that is probably worth 50 grand on the assessed value, probably much less on an open market. So at this point, we're going to hold, look at different options, which may consider raising or selling of the property. So no action is needed on either the transferring of the funds to the Redevelopment Authority or the action on Candlewood Property Management.
Okay. Director, do you want to give us, for those who are watching at home and may not understand fully the reason we have the property in the first place, can you talk a little bit about the loans and why this happened?
Sure. So the city and Redevelopment Authority granted loans on this property through, one, the CDBG funds, as well as the Housing Trust Funds for low-to-moderate income individuals to do repairs on the home. I think the loans are for the roof, siding, and windows. Those elements are in good shape. It's just the interior that's in really poor shape. With that, we typically take a lien on the property. Normally, we're not in first position, so it's pretty rare that we're in first position. This one, we were. The owner had passed away, and then the person taking over the property was not able to qualify for the programs. Therefore, they signed the property over to one of the agencies, which in this case was the city.
In lieu of a foreclosure?
Correct.
So I want to just stress that we didn't go out and seek this property to purchase. We're kind of getting it by default. So we'll decide what to do with it and bring some action back through committees and subsequently council. So no action is needed there. We will move on to item number seven, which is on page 45 of your packet, Alders, and that is a resolution for a conditional use permit at 401 Third Street to construct a home addition utilizing traditional neighborhood development district reduced setbacks. Alder Jennings.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Seconded by President Johnson. Any discussion? Comments from the audience? Hearing none. All those in favor, I'm sorry, roll call vote, please.
Okay. Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slowinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Nine zero. That is approved. Item number eight is on page 49 of your packet, and that's a resolution to amend the planned development plans for the property located on Frederick Street between Washington Avenue and Fourth Avenue with the parcel numbers identified there. We do have a representative here. Do you wish to speak, or are you here as a resource?
Just as a resource.
Just as a resource. Okay. So if we have any questions. So Alders, what are your wishes?
Move approval.
I'm going to recognize the hand of Alder Niebone. I'll give you the second, Alder Phillips.
I would move approval of the, to amend the planned development plans for the property located on Frederick Street between Washington Avenue and Fourth Avenue identified by the parcels as noted.
Thank you. Seconded by Alder Phillips. Discussion. Hearing none. Could I get a roll call, please?
Morrow.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slowinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Nine zero. Nine zero. Nine zero. That is approved. Item number nine is on page 52 of your packet, one that's particularly exciting to me, an ordinance amendment in Chapter 23 for zoning, Sections 23.02 and 23.04, to clarify solar uses and add solar definitions. Alder Dalton.
Motion to approve the ordinance amendment in Chapter 23.
Thank you. Seconded by Alder Shore. Discussion there? Hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry, Alder Dugan.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm or clarify that a solar farm is a conditional use in a conservancy district. Is that correct?
Director, do you want to speak to that?
It's not a permitted. Yeah, okay, I think that's right. An array's okay, but not a...
That's correct. So a solar array, item 2J, would be permitted, and a solar farm would be under 3M, which would be conditional. So they would have the opportunity to review what the development pattern is, why it's considered conservancy and so forth, as they go through that process.
And that speaks, I mean, we talked about this a little bit at committee. The solar farm is defined as the primary use of the property.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I'm hoping in the future that we can somehow sort out something whereby conservancy can be really conservancy, you know, conserving of a green space.
As we're looking through our new zoning code, there's a separation of those areas that want to preserve because of the environmental resource. Yeah, we're breaking those out.
Good, thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slowinski.
Aye.
Nibone.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Phillips. Morrow.
Aye.
Nine zero. That is approved. Item number 10 is on page 55 of your packets, and that's an ordinance amendment regarding Chapter 9's Traffic Section, 9.05 Parking, with accessible parking on Main Street and First Avenue, near Patchelli Catholic Middle School, and a no-parking zone on Minnesota Avenue. Alder Dugan.
Yeah, I would move to accept, approve the revised municipal code here involving...
Okay, do we have a second? Seconded by Alder Person Morrow. Discussion? Alder Dugan.
I just wanted to let people know that I'm pleased that Minnesota Avenue from Jordan to Stanley is going to get this correction. And the swales that are going in there look wonderful.
Thank you very much.
I agree.
Okay. If you are in favor of the motion, you will vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and we'll have the clerk call the roll.
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slowinski.
Aye.